Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations, so visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
The meeting of the Board of Selectmen is a joint meeting to begin with this evening with the Planning Board. Tonight is Monday, April 29th. If you could all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the Planning Board here this evening and welcome them. We also have members of the Community Preservation Committee here in attendance as well, and I'd like to turn it over to the Town Manager for some opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town Manager Julian Susso, regarding the presentation of Springs Bars, the Spring Bars Road Project and Planning Area, the draft report, as the Board is aware. Just a few introductory comments. This report was requested by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen and represents a further strengthening of the town's relationship, a strong working relationship with the Cape Cod Commission by utilizing their technical services. The report draft is comprehensive and detailed and will be beneficial to the town as it continues to consider development of affordable housing at the Spring Bars Road site and redevelopment in the project area. The purpose of this meeting this evening, of course, is for the Joint Boards, Planning and Selectmen to receive a formal presentation of this draft report. And I want to acknowledge that representing the Cape Cod Commission are Sarah Korgiev, the Project Coordinator, Patty Daly, and Paul Ruschinskis, and we appreciate very much their professionalism and expertise in bringing this package together. I want to acknowledge also my colleagues, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper and Town Planner Brian Curry, for their considerable expertise, commitment of time, energy, and resources in helping to ensure that this comes together well. We also acknowledge our colleagues at the, Peter Clark and his colleagues on their commission for their assistance in making all this happen and coming together, and their patience as this important process goes forward. So I think without further ado, I should pass this off to our colleagues on the Cape Cod Commission, the members of the staff to present a PowerPoint and begin the discussion here with the Selectmen and the Planning Board.
Hi, my name is Sarah Korgiev. I'm a Preservation Specialist with the Cape Cod Commission, the Project Coordinator for this project. I think I may need some assistance with advancing the slides, just because the clicker isn't working. I don't know who wants, oh great. Thanks, Brian. Okay. All right. Great. So as mentioned, we began this project at the request of the Town of Falmouth, and we agreed to a scope of work in late December of 2012. We began work just after that, and we submitted this draft report to the Town on April 1st, and right now we're hoping to gather as much as we can in terms of comments, and we will incorporate those comments into a final report at a time to be determined by the Town. The scope of work that was agreed upon includes three parts. First, a study of the Spring Bars Road site, both the infrastructure needs and the resource constraints there. Second, an assessment of the financial viability of the proposed 30-unit affordable housing proposal. And next, and third, looking at the broader study area, the neighborhoods surrounding the Spring Bars Road site, and the opportunities and constraints there in that greater neighborhood. Can we shift over so we can get the whole picture on screen? Thank you. That's great. So just briefly beginning the report, we look at the site history, and I just wanted to show these two USGS maps from 1893 and 1941, which help to illustrate how sort of the development history of this site. Really, there was not anything recognizable in terms of development on this property until really the recent past. In the 1893 map on the left, we see no structures in the vicinity of the Spring Bars Road site, and even in the 1941 map, we see only a dirt road that leads up to the site from the left. There's no connection to Mare Vista, there's no Randolph Road, and there's a large cranberry bog across the street to the north. So really, all the development that we've seen has occurred in the very recent past. So walking through the report, the first issue that we address is natural resources. We know that the property has significant natural resources. The Town put a conservation restriction on 9.5 acres of adjacent land to protect wetlands and vernal pool in the Little Pond shoreline, but the configuration of these lots brings the edges of these natural resources and certainly their buffers onto the developable site, too. And that's what you see in this image in blue, shows the 100-foot buffer around the wetland areas there. And also in red, we see that a large portion of the site is designated as flood zone, flood zone A, and that's shown in red. You can see that it covers all of the sort of southwestern portion of the site. What it does leave is an area, leave open is an area adjacent to Spring Bars Road, which you see on, sort of in the top-left corner of the property. Now, this red represents the current flood insurance rate map designation of the A-zone in the area, and we are aware that those maps are under review, and there's likely to be a new designation at some point in the next year or so. Now, this project is unlikely to undergo Cape Cod Commission review. It's likely to be developed as a friendly 40B, but we felt it's appropriate to note the resource protection goals in the Regional Policy Plan for Barnstable County. Starting first with the 100-foot wetlands buffer here, which is the same as the State Wetlands Protection Act would require to, for habitat protection around the wetland areas on the conservation parcel, but there, as you can see, the buffer areas do extend onto the developable parcel that we're looking at. Also, the issue of the vernal pool, while it's not certified by the state, it is eligible for certification. The Cape Cod Commission and their Regional Policy Plan recommends a 350-foot buffer to vernal pools due to the species mobility. Obviously, if that 350-foot buffer were imposed on this site, it would have a significant impact on the developable area. We're not suggesting that that's appropriate, but it's certainly not along all buffer areas, but to the extent that we can address habitat for vernal pool species, we think that's appropriate. Also, looking at Little Pond, the 200-foot riverfront buffer, which is required under state regulations, that really only affects the southernmost portion of the developable parcel, the small panhandle that sticks out to the east and connects to the Little Pond shoreline. And finally, the flood plain, which really is the most significant natural resource issue on this property, partly because of its changing nature. I already mentioned the fact that the flood insurance rate maps will likely change in the near future, and also because of the extent of the site that's affected by this flood zone. This will direct both the siting of buildings as well as the design of buildings, the potential need for them to be elevated. The state building code requires elevating buildings above base flood elevation. The Regional Policy Plan for Barnstable County calls for an elevation, for elevating buildings one foot above base flood elevation to accommodate sea level rise, and that's something that we strongly recommend for any kind of development that you expect to have a long-term life. The Conservation Commission in Falmouth, we also understand, is working on establishing regulations for building in flood zones, though those are under development now. And I also want to note that some affordable housing grant sources at the federal level have flood zone development restrictions, so it's an issue that I'll discuss a little bit more later in this presentation, but that we need to pay a lot of attention to. We recommend invasive species management be considered on the property to support the invasive species management that's proposed on the conservation parcel as part of the Horsley-Witten Study that's been done for the Town. And we also suggest looking at the Little Pond access area, that small strip in the southern portion of the property that I mentioned, that the Town consider providing access to Little Pond through the conservation parcel rather than along the narrow strip in the southern portion of the parcel in an effort to further protect buffer areas to the wetlands and the vernal pool. The second issue that we covered is that of wastewater and water supply. There's a need, obviously, to provide wastewater infrastructure on the site. None exists today. On-site provision really is infeasible because of the future sewer plans for the area. The Town has a comprehensive wastewater management plan that includes a sewer plan for the Little Pond watershed. They currently have 30% design plans that include a gravity main sewer that would pass down Spring Bars Road, past this site, and the estimated time of implementation of that plan is 2017, though certainly could be longer. The sewer extension plan for the proposed project, I'm sorry, a sewer extension plan was also done specifically for the Spring Bars Road site prior to the development of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. That set of plans is in 95% design drawings, and those are both illustrated, one above the other on the right-hand side of this slide. I'm sure that due to the scale, it's hard to see the differences, but the two plans are not entirely consistent with each other. And one of our primary recommendations really is reviewing the engineering and making sure that those plans are compatible, so that whatever the timing is that the Town chooses to pursue in terms of when to construct the sewer infrastructure, that the two plans would complement, that any work would complement the long-term goals of sewer, providing sewer for this area. Water supply also needs to be brought to the site, and it's possible that that could be brought into the site either from the west or from the east along Spring Bars Road, depending on the Town's preference and depending on the pressure available. We looked at cost estimates for doing these major infrastructure pieces. The capital cost estimate for the sewer extension is $440,000, plus a $43,000 estimate for road restoration work if it were done, if the work was to be done prior to the comprehensive wastewater management plan implementation. The capital cost estimate for the water supply extension would be in the range of $124,000 to $161,000. Some elements of the sewer design, particularly the gravity main to the project site, could potentially become, if this work were done before the comprehensive wastewater management plan were implemented, they could potentially become part of the infrastructure for the Little Pond watershed's sewer infrastructure. But in order for that to happen, the designs would need to be coordinated in advance, certainly, and they would also need to ensure that the Town's preferences in terms of design are addressed. That of, I mean, what we've been told is that there is a preference for gravity feed whenever possible. I mean, certainly, there are various engineering designs that could be addressed, and I think that's an issue that needs further discussion, potentially with our water resources staff. In terms of permitting and approvals, there's a possible state DEP permit required if pumping is involved, and also it appears that the sewer extension would require Town meeting action here in Falmouth to extend to this site. In terms of timing, that will have an impact on the construction costs, certainly, whether or not the Town chooses to go forward with the sewer construction prior to the comprehensive wastewater management plan, or whether they choose to wait till the Town, till the Little Pond watershed is being addressed. And I guess a decision on that would, could be based somewhat on how that process is proceeding at this time. We're aware that the most recent Town meeting actually voted to begin to allocate funding for the next step in the Little Pond watershed sewer design. In terms of transportation, staff looked at roadway characteristics, intersections in the project area, as well as pedestrian, bike, and transit accommodations. They looked at things like lane width, shoulders, posted travel speeds, existing sidewalk locations, whether shoulders were, could be accessible to bicycles. We acknowledge that there are planned improvements already for the intersection of David Straits and Worcester Court, and so that area was not studied in any detail because of that. But to address safety issues, we also looked at traffic volumes on the existing roadway segments surrounding Spring Bars Road site, roadway capacity, or the level of service at the various segments, intersections, and also crash history. Travel speeds and accidents in this area were one of the concerns we heard when we met with residents to talk about concerns for this neighborhood, and also issues of pedestrian safety. In general, safety, congestion, and connectivity issues, pedestrian connectivity issues, exist in the area. There already are, the number of crashes have at the Spring Bars Road and Worcester Court intersection, and at Spring Bars Road and David Straits intersection have raised some flags, concern about the functioning of those intersections. However, we don't believe that the proposed development, the 30-unit affordable housing development, would actually have a significant increased impact on traffic, either generation, or safety, or level of service in the area. We believe those are issues that really deal with the entire greater neighborhood, and so we'll actually, I'll talk about those a little bit more when we get to looking at the broader study area. The project does, one of the real benefits of this site is that it provides great access to a wide variety of facilities nearby, and many of them are within walking distance, and they're also within walking distance of a transit stop in the Falmouth Mall. However, in order to really take advantage of those facilities, you need to have safe pedestrian access, and there are, there is a need to improve pedestrian facilities in a number of locations in the project area, specifically along Spring Bars Road. There's a need for safe crosswalks. So we did look in the study at the cost of providing either improved, or at least rehabilitated sidewalks in areas where they're, where they're less sufficient, and also areas where crosswalks should be identified and installed. Specifically near the rear of the Falmouth Mall, there's a need for a crosswalk across Spring Bars Road, but because of the curve of the road, there are some sight distance considerations there that raise safety issues. So there is suggestion in the report that actually the crosswalk be considered at a location not right at the rear entrance to the mall, but actually moved down the road about 200 feet to the west, and that that would provide better sight distance, better visibility for any pedestrians who are crossing. We looked at cost estimates, as I said. The cost estimates for just sidewalk rehabilitation, so simpler improvements would be in the range of $5,000 to $20,000, while a real sidewalk upgrade along Spring Bars Road and connecting to the Falmouth Mall and adjacent sidewalk areas would be more on the order of $150,000. The third part, I should say third, the second part of our report dealt with project feasibility and the viability of the 30-unit affordable housing complex. We compared the proposal with eight similar projects that were developed in the region in the last three years in an effort to estimate construction and design costs, and most of these projects use on-site wastewater. There's only one that required a sewer hookup, but otherwise they have a lot of similar characteristics. The picture you see here is actually of the one that required a sewer hookup. It's located in Provincetown. Looking at those eight similar projects, the average total development cost for all of them came out at $300,000 per unit of affordable housing provided. So comparing that with the project that's proposed here in Falmouth, including infrastructure costs that are unique to the Spring Bars Road property, including providing sewer, providing water, providing fill in order to address flood zone issues, the fact that the Town has requested higher-end, I'm sorry, multiple buildings and energy efficiency and accessibility goals, we've estimated higher building construction costs due to those things, and so we've come out with an estimated cost of $350,000, I'm sorry, $315,000 per unit. So not a significant difference really between the average there. That's high, but it's well below the Department of Housing and Community Development's lending cap, which is $350,000 per unit. And I should also mention that if the sewer costs were not included in that, because they are likely not eligible under Department of Housing and Community Development funding, because the sewer would not serve only this property, that if those sewer costs were taken out, then the estimated cost per unit would be $290,000. So the total development cost for the project is just under $9.5 million. The greatest piece of that is building construction costs, which would be roughly $4 million, and site construction costs, which would be about $1.75 million. So with those numbers, we, staff has determined the project is financially feasible, and we use conservative assumptions really throughout to make that determination. The primary funder for the project would need to be the low-income housing tax credit. They typically cover about 60% of total development costs for a project, which would translate in this case to about $5.56 million in tax credit equity. 30 units, which is proposed here, is on the lower end of the range that are typically funded through low-income housing tax credit. They're more likely to be focused on 40- to 60-unit proposals, but it's certainly within the range. We've estimated that the project could carry a first mortgage of $1.75 million, that the other major funding elements would be local funding sources to provide for sewer extension costs in the order of 3/4 of a million, which could be coming either from potentially CPA or Town Capital Funds, or through transfer of development rights, which will, again, I'll discuss in a little bit more, but the possibility of sale of excess development rights, which could be built on this parcel but that are not proposed there, you could potentially sell those development rights to be used in another location. And staff has suggested in the report that TDR is likely your best option to offset the cost to the Town, though it does add complexity to the project, to an already complex process. To round out the funding, developer would need about $1.4 million from various Department of Housing and Community Development sources. It could be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Home Funds, or others, and we feel that this is a reasonable amount to request for a project of this site. To get on to a few of the other questions that were raised by the Town and others in our discussions, we tried to answer the question of the viability of having 100% affordable units at the location versus a mixed-use property, and the best that we felt we could offer was to look at an Urban Land Institute study that was put out in 2010, which in its review points to the benefits really associated with the place, the location of affordable housing, rather than, as that being most important in terms of providing a project where people, you know, potentially have upward mobility and can feel safe and be less stressed, that the importance of place is really more significant than the proximity to people of varied incomes within the same housing development. We also looked at the issue of long-term viability, and want to offer that the experience level of the development entity and the property management firm are really the key issues in that. We've recommended that in the RFP, that we include, the Town includes two to three, I'm sorry, requests two to three years' worth of financial statements from comparable projects that they've managed, so that you can evaluate the ability of a manager and a developer to actually maintain a property in good condition in the long term. Also in the RFP, we've recommended that you include a process to address flood zone issues since they are a significant issue for this property, and because of the fact that some federal funding sources will actually require that these be addressed in great detail. Our overall recommendation in terms of the financial feasibility and viability of the project is really to proceed sooner rather than later on it, to take advantage of a number of financial benefits. One is to take advantage of lower debt interest rates that exist today, to take advantage of the fact that there's a great deal of interest in tax credit projects right now. There are a number of investors, and there are high yields in tax credit projects right now. now, to take advantage of the fact that construction costs are likely to rise in the future, not go down, and also recognizing that the town could benefit from real estate taxes from the project, which would be on the order of $15,000 to $20,000 a year. Looking at site planning issues, overall, we wanted to note, again, the benefits of this location in terms of its proximity to a wide variety of community facilities, everything from Falmouth Harbor to the Gus Canty Recreation Center, to schools, to Little Pond, and certainly to the open space that's immediately adjacent to it. Also proximity to a retail area with offices and basic needs, grocery store, drugstore. The retail area also potentially can provide, could provide jobs for folks who are living here, and access to recreational opportunities. In terms of some of the other issues, zoning, we found was really not a limitation of, in terms of site development here, that it, zoning allows multifamily dwellings and would allow up to 66 units based on the acreage of the site. In terms of natural resources, I've talked about the buffer constraints already, but just wanted to state again the benefit of actually providing those buffers in terms of natural resource protection in the area and protection to Little Pond. Really, the key concern is that of the flood zone. We recommend elevating the buildings to one foot above the base flood elevation, any buildings constructed on the site. You could potentially design garages or storage areas on the lower level of a structure and keep the living spaces on the second level, and address the flood issues that way, though that could conflict with the town's goals for handicapped access. You could also bring in fill to raise the site in limited areas, but you need to do that carefully in order to ensure that you're not diverting floodwaters to the closely-developed neighborhoods that are adjacent to the property. So you would need, for any fill that you brought in, you would need to be removing some land from the site, or some sand from the site also. One possibility would be to remove some of the mounds of dirt that exist on the site now that are sort of a byproduct of the previous land use, and that may be the easiest way to deal with, with measuring, sort of, the potential impact of, of bringing in fill. And that's something we'd like to get into in a little more detail in the, in the final version of the report, if the town can help us to identify a preferred sort of site alternative or site layout that you'd like us to consider in more detail. Speaking of site layouts, we did include in the report four potential scenarios for actually laying out the buildings on the site, and this responds partly to the fact that the town and neighborhood have clearly stated that they're not interested in a single building, but rather in a cluster of smaller structures that are more consistent with the character of the surrounding areas. The four possible layouts, we've cited the buildings to limit development in the flood zone area, also to limit the need for fill to be brought into the site, and finally, to orient development to existing features in the neighborhood. So I'll just walk through these four quickly, but the, the rough building footprints that are illustrated here by the small gray rectangles you see on each of the site scenarios, each of that rectangles, rectangles, yeah, represents a two-story building with roughly a 2,000-square foot footprint. So as shown in these scenarios, each building would contain five or six units. It's also possible that a larger number of buildings could be proposed. They would each obviously be smaller buildings, less than 2,000-square-foot footprint, or a slightly smaller number of buildings with slightly larger buildings, building footprints could also be possible. Under scenario one, on the top left, the buildings are oriented along, along the frontage of Springbars Road, continuing the pattern of residential streets in the area. Some fill is needed in this proposal, though not a significant amount because, because of their proximity to the roadway, which is an area that's primarily outside of the flood zone as defined today. Scenario two, which is on the right, the buildings are clustered on the highest ground in the property, highest flat ground, I should say, near what's currently the fenced-in parking area on the site. Here, they have, the buildings would have a limited presence on Springbars Road. There would be longer infrastructure connections between the buildings and the sewer and water that's brought into the site, but there are opportunities with this sighting to cite the buildings so they can view and take advantage of the conservation land, potentially even views to Little Pond. Scenario number three, which is the bottom left, the buildings are clustered in the northwest corner of the site, relating it to development at the intersection of Springbars Road and Worcester Court. Again, this would require some fill, particularly for the buildings that are sited further to the south on the property, but it does leave the eastern half of the site for potentially another use, including habitat conservation in the short term, given that that location, that part of the land is, is virtually surrounded by, by natural resources. And fourth, in the bottom right corner, scenario four is, has the buildings grouped along the road frontage in the northeast corner of the lot. This places them all across from an existing sort of wetland area on the Falmouth Mall side of the property, I'm sorry, side of the road, and it also keeps them close to the conservation land that's proposed there, so that may be able to take advantage of views and just natural habitat there, but still maintain a presence on Springbars Road that's more consistent with the residential neighborhood surrounding. Finally, I want to acknowledge the other benefits of the site, really, even going beyond Springbars Road to the entire neighborhood. We felt this is a very desirable place to be because of the wide variety of facilities that are here, the easy access to schools, to the community center, to the harbor, to the senior center, to food and drugstores, and certainly to natural resources. This illustration here is meant to show how easy it is for people to get to many of those resources in the pale blue. That is meant to represent the distance of a half a mile from the front of the Springbars Road site, where there's a star shown on the map. So that's as a person walks down either roadways or through parking areas or paths, as opposed to just as the crow flies. And then the darker blue shows a one-half mile walking distance from that site. And you can see that you can almost get to the Gus Canty Recreation Center within that half mile, you're not that far from the harbor, and you can certainly get to many of the retail and commercial establishments that are in the area. We also looked at, we looked at a wide variety of, of issues when we were studying the larger area surrounding the Springbars Road site, things like zoning, the age of buildings, the age of development in the surrounding area, also the, the current land uses today. But I did not bring all those graphics, they are all in the, in the report, though. But given that circulation and connectivity to all these facilities really is a key asset, we looked at the factors that affect pedestrian accessibility and access to these facilities in a little more detail, and this graphic shows some of these elements. This is a little bit close, it's a little bit washed out, I apologize. But here on this, on this illustration, the purple lines that you see represent existing sidewalks and crosswalks, and, and we've identified some areas where they're, they're missing, and really notably with the connection to the harbor, and also, and there's just the need to fill in some gaps in terms of safe crosswalk locations and easy sidewalk connections to the wide variety of facilities that are there. We also show in here walkable, walkable building facades, if you will, so buildings that are scaled to pedestrians, whether they're residential buildings, or whether they're mixed-use or commercial or office buildings, but they're of a scale that's comfortable for pedestrians to be walking in front of, whether it's because of their sighting, or their use of display windows, or the lack of large parking lots in front, and so there are fewer conflicts with automobiles as you're passing in front. And given the, the density of the pedestrian neighborhoods that are adjacent to here, it's really, this would be the desirable, a more desirable form of development in order to allow people to easily travel through the area to their needs. Red in this map shows areas with parking lots, large parking lots, and parking in front between the buildings and pedestrian travel areas, and so those also pose a barrier to pedestrian movement. The numbers you see there are the posted speed limits on the roads in the neighborhood, and I think we acknowledge that they may not be the speed limits that people travel at. And, and some of the streets, like Worcester Court doesn't even have a posted speed limit, and that's one of the issues that folks raised. But in general, what, I think what stood out to us maybe more than anything else was the lack of transition between these dense residential neighborhoods and these very large-scale and high, commercial blocks and high-volume roadway of Davis Straits, Route 28. So there's a real opportunity for improving that relationship, sort of a transition between those two areas, and at least to prevent changes that would further exacerbate sort of these pedestrian barriers and make it less friendly for pedestrians to use this area. So, last slide? So, the, in terms of study area recommendations, again, this is a graphic, it's a close-up of one that's in the report, that's meant to illustrate opportunities in the area and issues to be addressed. But we encourage mixed-use development to create a transition area between the tight residential developments and the large commercial areas abutting them, particularly along the Worcester Court area, where there's already a wonderful pedestrian connection that comes straight up from the beach and travels all the way up to Route 28, and there's a real dramatic, there's a dramatic change in the character of that area as you approach Springbars Road, and to try to allow for a pedestrian path that's a desirable path to travel on along the entire extent of, of Worcester Court, we think makes a lot of sense. Also, creating design guidelines and establishing zoning regulations that would guide both the sighting of buildings and the design of buildings, and, and potentially regulate the uses that would be allowed in these areas where, where you want to create more of a transition zone, where you want to be more pedestrian-friendly, to separate it from the more automobile-oriented uses. Create master plans for some of the large commercial plazas in the area that have the potential for redevelopment and a great deal of changes because of their size. It would be, it would make sense to look at what you'd like to see happen in those areas now, before other, before changes are made. Also, create development nodes along Davis Straits, Route 28, in an effort to break up some of the traffic congestion there, and also to better facilitate pedestrians' ability to cross over that roadway, which is a challenge right now. Looking at transfer of development rights plan for the town relating to the Springbars Road site development, acknowledging that if 30 affordable units are developed there, that you still have another 30 units that would be allowed under zoning, and you could potentially either transfer those development rights to this study area as a way of encouraging additional residential development of, over offices or over existing commercial uses, or whether you want to determine places throughout the entire town that you might like to encourage additional residential development, maybe you're looking for mixed-use in another portion of town. But develop a plan for how those development rights could be transferred to another site. Transportation safety improvements, we've talked, I've talked already about pedestrian improvements, and also a little bit about bicycle accommodations, but the two intersection safety issues that really need to be addressed are at Springbars Road and Worcester Court, and at Springbars Road and Davis Straits, and the report includes both short-term and long-term recommendations for both of those sites. In terms of low-cost improvements, things like advanced stop warning signs, and longer-term improvements, specifically at Springbars Road and Worcester Court, the consideration of four-way stop there. At Springbars Road and Davis Straits, long-term, or, I'm sorry, low-cost alternatives could be conspicuous roadway markings at the sidewalks, or efforts to consolidate, or minimize the number of curb cuts close to the intersections, but on the longer term, looking at a road safety audit that would consider a traffic signal, or a roundabout, or some new configuration like that at that location, that really needs to be studied in greater detail. I just want to finish up by saying that we've received the staff, development staff comments on the draft. We got those last week, and we intend, intend to address them in the, in an upcoming final report, and some of them, I think, will require some further discussions with staff so that we fully understand what their concerns are. And we will also be sure to include an executive summary at the front part of the report. We heard a couple of comments about that. But that's the end of my presentation for tonight, and I just wanted to open it up for questions.
Okay. I'll be happy to answer questions from either the board or planning board. If you want to direct it to the staff, I'd be happy to do so. Ralph, do you want to?
Sure. It's open to anybody here that would like to speak.
I've heard that you're going to be paying attention to the staff comments, but I think both boards really need to get together and discuss this. I think you all need to discuss it individually, we do, and then because of the importance of this, I think we really need to get together before anything is finalized here, so that you get board comments as well.
Yeah. Well, taken. I would think that the vote, before the voters this spring, for the engineering and the layout and the design of the sewage treatment for that area would be a big variable as how we move forward. So, I mean, we'll all be looking to see how that vote actually goes to the voters.
Anyone else?
I have some comments. I've studied this report in depth, and I have some real concerns, especially when we take into consideration the other materials in the planning board that we're discussing regarding floodplain construction and hazard mitigation. We had taken into consideration the $2 million we've spent to acquire this site, plus an approximately $700,000 more to bring additional utilities in it. It doesn't make sense for the town to enter into another high-risk, high-cost development project. On its face, it's only marginally feasible. Granted, where there's a will, there's a way, and with the assistance of low-income housing tax credits, and the ability to turn a blind eye on federal guidelines for smart growth approaches to hazard mitigation and reduction of development in the floodplain, we may be able to overcome some of the challenges this site presents. However, in my view, we should consider transferring the development rights from this to a more suitable site, and use this site as a park, and the sea level rise and storm surge mitigation.
Well, taken. Anybody else?
Sure. Go ahead.
I want to echo that. Jim had mentioned that we are working on future plans, land use for the town of Falmouth, and to put something smack dab at the head of a pond, like Little Pond, where the wetlands actually extend from the head of this pond all the way to back T-Ticket School. And I'm glad the town bought it, because I think it could be a real key component to clearing up the waterways. If that's restored to a wetland area, that's a recharge area, that's a flood mitigation area, I think that's better use of this property than putting people in houses that could possibly put them in danger, and the fact of all the additional costs of building these, putting them up on pilings, all that kind of structural stuff that needs to happen. I just think it's, it's way beyond an affordable unit construction, and I just think it's in the wrong place, and I think we'd regret putting it there.
When I was reading this, I was quite dismayed, because when it was originally sold to the town as affordable housing, and one of the reasons we would purchase it, it wasn't only affordable housing, it was mixed affordability. I think that may be the best way to describe it. Yet this report says that the only way that it is financially feasible is to have 100% of the housing be at 60% AMI, because only then could you get the tax credits. That guarantees that it is going to be very low-income housing, 100%, and I don't find that acceptable, really. I don't know if there's some other way of getting the funding in there to make it what we were originally sold as the town, or not.
Anyone else in the planning board?
When you do the cost analysis of the development costs, I see they didn't include the $2 million land acquisition in this comparison with the other developments. In the other developments, is a In the other developments, is the land acquisition cost included?
I'm going to have to ask Paul if that, do you know? Yeah.
Paul Ruchinska is Affordable Housing Specialist at the Commission. In other projects where, four, four of them had town-donated land, and that donated, the value of that land is not included in the development costs pro forma. The pro forma reflects what the, whoever the developer is paid to acquire it, so if the town provides it for a dollar or for nothing, that's the acquisition cost that goes in the developer, pro forma. We acknowledge the $2 million that's been spent by the town, but for the purposes of getting the funding for what the actual developer will pay, it'll be zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the planning board? Go ahead.
I also read the report, and I thought it was very well done. Some areas, I thought were extremely well done, product analysis, access to work, supply things like that, can only be enhanced by the figures, which are not in there yet. But I do have three major concerns. One is the floodplain area. We appear to be putting the responsibility to a contract on addressing the restrictions on floodplain. We're talking about raising the floodplain, at least a foot. But the new flood delineation coming out later this year may be considerably higher than that. So maybe not the best place to put these particular houses. The second one is the wastewater issue, the discussion of the $700,000 onsite wastewater. Well, when Little Pond has been approved by town meeting, no developers are going to put in an onsite system if the person come in, but there will be delays associated with that. In fact, the report states that the Department of Utilities said the approval for service this area requires a town meeting vote, and that doesn't happen overnight. So I think the timeline is going to be really affected by this. And the third area I have is the financial feasibility. There's a number of very interesting things in that. The cost per unit, the cost per square foot, compared to the eight projects that have been developed recently, this is 20% higher. So I think it's going to be difficult for a developer to come in and address these issues on a RFP at this time. So I would just caution to look at those particular issues, because I think they're important.
I'm going to get to public comment in a moment. I just wanted to hear from both boards first. Go ahead, Doug.
And one other comment is that we don't have a mechanism now to transfer the development rights on this, so that's another town meeting vote. And so when we say we want to move forward now, because the timing is good for the tax credits, I don't think that takes into consideration the other limitations, because the transfer of development rights, whether it's on 30 units or 60, is pretty important for us.
Okay. Ralph?
I wondered if the Commission had looked at the fact that this area was mined before by the previous user, and to what degree that had lowered the elevation, and whether or not bringing in fill wouldn't simply restore it to what it was.
We certainly were aware of the fact that the prior land use involved removal of a lot of sand and topsoil. I think we, in talking with our natural resources specialist, her opinion was that it was certainly possible to consider bringing in fill, given the past history of the site. And I think her opinion was that, obviously, you'd have to deal with any regulations in the town and federal regulations that would deal with bringing in fill, and you'd have to worry about the issues of stormwater, I'm sorry, of the potential of moving floodzone impacts off of this property onto others. But she was the one who acknowledged that it would be possible to potentially bring in certain amount of fill and remove a certain amount of fill from another portion of the site, to try to have an equal amount of, to end up with a net no change in the flooding impacts on the property.
Yeah. My other question is, the housing that you had proposed, are there those four different plans? That housing was all outside the floodplain, is that correct?
It was not 100% outside the floodplain, no. It was, we did our best to locate those buildings either outside the floodplain or right on the edges of it, with the idea that the amount of fill that would be required would be minimal.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the planning board? We can come back to you. Anyone else on the Board of Select that have any comments? Pat?
Well, it was interesting. I don't know how many of you saw the article in the Cape Cod Times yesterday about the gentleman in, somewhere on the, on the New Jersey shore, obviously where Sandy hit, and all the houses around him were completely demolished, and his house is the only one that remains standing. And that's because he built it up, and he put the flow-through walls in the lower construction area. And I noticed he had a number of steps going up to the living level. And, and I thought to myself, I lived in a house like that here in North Falmouth, where the breakaway walls, and you had to build up. And my thought was, as Sarah mentioned, that sometimes if you have to go up and you have people with disabilities, that could be a problem for someone trying to get to that living level of the house. And actually, I had not given that much thought to the fact that this was in a floodplain, nor was I really aware that there were going to be new federal regulations on that flood hazard zone come sometime with, possibly within the next year. But I think those are real issues and real concerns, and obviously, there's a way to get around them, or not to get around them, but actually to take them into consideration and still have the project move forward. But I would imagine that the house that this gentleman built on the Jersey shore probably costs a lot more than the houses that were around him, and so the cost rise as, as you have to take that into consideration. So I think that, that throws in another area of great consideration in terms of cost and all of that. But I, I think you've done a really good job, Sarah and Patty and the other members of the Commission, Paul, in really taking a look at not only the project itself, but so important is the surrounding area, and how does that affect the quality of life of the people who are going to live in this project? And not only that, but it helps us understand that this is an area in Falmouth that, those surrounding areas have been there for a long time, the Falmouth Plaza, the Falmouth Mall. And one of these days, in the not-too-distant future, there is going to be some redevelopment there. And we should really, as a community, take a look at that and have some plan for what we think maybe, as a community, ought to be there, so that when someone comes along and says they want to rebuild, that, that we have some, some thoughts, some guidelines, some, some vision as to what we want that area of town to look like. And also, the, to preserve that pedestrian access and availability to, to what surrounds any type of a housing project that would be built in there. So I, I think you gave us a great deal of information, and something that will be very valuable as we move through the decision-making process. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Board of Select? David?
Thank you. Very good presentation. I am not speaking against affordable housing. I am going to just take exception to one thing you had said, which was, I know you mentioned that, we looked at, you did raise a red flag about the intersection of, with Worcester Court. There's been 20 motor vehicle accidents. There's been 20 motor vehicle accidents here in the last two years. I know there's been a few already since January, some very bad. And I'm hoping, if we're going to do this, we get it right, that that intersection is looked at, the intersection at 28 and Springbars, the intersection at Randolph and Maravesta, they all need to be looked at, because the exception I'm taking is, when you said 30 more units, should not do anything to increase an issue there. I think it will. I really do. We have another project around the corner, which I still think, well, the new CVS that they're looking at, because all that is relevant. So many people headed east on 28, take a right on Springbars to cut through, to go to Maravesta, to bypass that whole section. You know, and I mean, in the last two years, there's been 191 accidents on that stretch of road from Springbars all the way out to the rest of T-Ticket Highway. That's a lot, with the majority being May, June, July, and August. But if you sit there on any given day, it's, it is an accident waiting to happen. I'm not sure what the town's going to look at for safety issues, but something definitely has to be done, and I'm hoping that that is definitely looked at. Affordable housing, absolutely. I have no problem with the, with the plan. You've done a wonderful job, but I'm very concerned about safety, especially pedestrians as well. Thank you, Mr. Tran.
Anyone else? Doug, right? I'd also like to thank you, I'm going to get to some folks in the audience, I'd like to thank you folks for being so thorough. The whole idea of asking for this review is because we want to get this project right if we move forward with it. We want to make sure that it's a project that the community can be proud of, and even more so than that, the neighbors in that particular area can be proud of. I do agree with some of the points brought up by the planning board. Number one, the new floodplain maps. It would be disingenuous for this board to try to move forward before those maps came out. It would be rather quick to judgment, because you would be saying, "Don't do as I do, do as I say." We all know that those, those flood areas are going to adjust, and to put out a, put out a project before, before we actually know where they are, could actually put the project in harm's way, number one. Number two, we also have to, I would also like to say that I'm happy, on behalf of the neighbors, that we kept the project at the 30 units. We live by what we said that we were going to live by, and that's where we need to make our value judgment, on whether 30 units can move there, can, can sustain there, and we can build that project to be proud of in that 30 units. And I'm glad to also see, though, that we're talking about what the actual transfer of development rights are, because most folks thought, when we were talking about that, we were trying to do a bait-and-switch by bringing in a mixed development there at that site. That hasn't been the case. What we're trying to do is get the most bang for the buck out of what we have for zoning there to be able to transfer those. And that's an area that this board doesn't have the ability to do. Your board does in regard to planning and what we would do with those transfer of development rights. I think that's an important tool as we move forward as a community. We've seen light industrial properties go by the wayside, and I know you've addressed it coming up with the light industrial C. But if we had some kind of transfer of development rights opportunity in this community, when we did that, we would be able to potentially transfer those development rights. So I hope your board will address that as we may move forward. But I also saw some of the original comments from the staff, and I think that's a useful exercise. The professional staff knows a lot more than us as lay folks do, and I appreciate your continued work on this. Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. Annie, first. Peter, you're next.
Hi. Annie Seganek, Falmouth Housing Trust. I'm not ready to give up on the housing yet. I do have a couple of technical questions, maybe Paul can answer. The slide that showed...
Through me, Annie. Go ahead.
What?
Through me. Don't direct there.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. The slide that showed the proposal of the units along the street, which I thought were out of the floodzone, but, so maybe one might not be, and maybe we could tweak it. How likely is HUD to grant a tax credit project, given the FEMA maps changing, or it probably, I expect they're going to change, and then they're going to change again, and it's a fluid thing. So how long does it take to get tax credit approval, and how likely is HUD to grant it if we know part of the buildable spot could be in a floodzone?
Do you have another question? Do you want to ask them both?
I'm looking at my notes, because I can't read my writing.
Okay. Would you like Paul to come up and answer that? We'll see if you can ask another one.
Yeah, and I'll read my notes, yeah.
Go ahead, Paul.
She'd never ask me how likely HUD is to do anything, but basically, the flood, from the HUD perspective, the floodplain only impacts if the funding is going to come from federal sources. So I attempted in the, in the report, we attempted in the report to say, there is an option, this is fundable under strictly tax credit and state and local funding, so the HUD, you know, requirements for environmental review wouldn't come into play under that condition. You'd have to meet all, whatever sort of state and local requirements were with respect to building in the floodplain, but you wouldn't trigger any of the HUD environmental review requirements on that. In terms of how likely HUD is to fund a tax credit project, our experience has been, is it typically takes two to three tries in the funding round for a project to get, get funded. There's a waiting list right now, it'll continue to get longer, because the DHCD's only doing one funding round this, this year. So it typically, there are two funding rounds a year typically, and it usually, if you do really well, you get it on your second try. More likely, it'll probably be your, your third try before you get funded. This project in Barnsville that just got funded this past round, and this was their fifth try, beginning with tax credit funding, so the demand far exceeds the, the supply on this. I hope that answers the question, or Kevin, do you have?
Yes. Annie, anything?
And then, real quick. So I haven't seen any proposals on the FEMA map changes, but I did receive information about the federal government no longer subsidizing flood insurance, really sort of starting to charge people what it's really costs. And is that going to affect a developer? Or do we know what that would be? Or no? So how would the, you know, the developer's going to have to insure it, if he's going to have a mortgage, he's going to have to carry his investment, protect it. We're going to want him to do that as a municipality. So do we have any idea about that, or is that not really knowledge available?
I think that, that question's addressed through you, Paul.
I didn't look at what the cost of flood insurance would be. Most of the affordable housing developments, just regular property insurance would run $15,000 to $30,000 a year, and that was sort of the range that I would, I was anticipating in terms of the operating budget. Should additional flood insurance, should flood insurance be needed, and that goes higher, then the applicant or developer will have to make adjustments. Either you reduce costs somewhere else, you perhaps get some rents, you could add, you know, a tier of folks up to 80% immediate income, you know, decrease your debt service requirements by putting some of your own development. So there are ways of, of working the, the budget so that you can accommodate that additional cost. But at this point, I don't, I don't know, and I don't think we do know, what, what that additional cost would be to the operating budget for the project.
Is it chairman?
Yes.
FEMA in March published new guidelines as for flood insurance, and it came up, they said basically the areas that are, haven't insured now have been subsidized at much lower rates, and they're predicting a 25% increase per year until the subsidy goes away. So anyone in the floodplain that has flood insurance now should be, in this area in particular, by FEMA's own guidelines and notes published in March, are 25% increase a year until it gets to an unsubsidized level. They basically feel here in the Northeast, we haven't been paying our fair share of insurance, it's been subsidized over the whole country, and now they want it to reflect, reflect the true cost. And that's one of the concerns, the papers, the guidelines that were passed out, we read, I couldn't understand why we're moving into this expensive area.
Okay. Peter?
Good evening, Mr. Murphy. I'm Peter Clark, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. The CPC spent a short time at our last meeting on Thursday, last Thursday, looking at the draft, and will spend most of our next meeting looking at it also. You have before you two votes that we took unanimously on Thursday, one of which commended the work of the Cape Cod Commission for the thoroughness and the information that's here. The second, that confirmed our belief in the importance of this project, our intent for the property to be leased or sold at a nominal rate to enhance the development of community housing, and that was particularly in response to the issue of whether the $2 million spent on the property should become part of the cost of the housing or not. Our feeling is that that was money well-spent, as a number of people have said, and should not be transferred into the cost of the housing. We are committed to the notion of a small development of affordable housing on this place. This was the article that was passed in 2010, it was the MOU that Mr. Murphy referred to. We believe that the development needs a sewer, and that the coordination that the Cape Cod Commission has talked about is important. Beyond that, I've passed along to the board and to others, I'll get it to the planning board, a set of seven questions that came up at our meeting that were not developed as committee positions, and a set of my own questions and issues. But most important in that are themes of not finding ways not to do this project, but finding ways to be able to try an RFP to private development, remember it's a private developer, to see what the results are. That's the way to know whether this is going to be feasible or not, is to put it out as an RFP with the conditions that we may see needed. to private development, remember it's a private developer, to see what the results are. That's the way to know whether this is gonna be feasible or not, is to put it out as an RFP with the conditions that we may see needed for a small development, and see whether we get developer responses to it. We don't have to accept any of them at all. If it doesn't meet our criteria, if it doesn't look as though it's gonna have the strength of management to make it affordable, I mean viable and long-term, we don't need to accept those responses to an RFP. But to fail to put out an RFP, I think will be a direct negative response to a decision that the town made in 2010, and that could be worked around. It's a complex development, there's no doubt about it. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have any comments?
Mark Finer in Precinct 6. I've brought this particular parcel up many times, mostly at the wastewater hearings. This property, the property where the mall is, the golf course, and all the way up to T-Ticket School was always a wetland. This gives us an opportunity to, if we don't do this project, to redevelop that as a wetland. It would do a great deal to attenuate the nitrogen that's damaging Little Pond. I have some experience with this piece of property. Many years ago, more than a decade ago, there used to be a business that was run there, and they stored boats as well. And I went out there one afternoon to pick someone up, and I happened to run over a garden hose that was feeding a trailer. I brought the kid that I brought back, that I picked up back about four hours later, discovered they had run over the hose, and I had created a sinkhole. It was about 20 feet across, maybe nine or 10 feet deep. And if you look down into it, there was nothing but trash and garbage in there. Now, we know it was all mined out. It's my information that they were dumping garbage there at the nighttime and covering it up with sand in the daytime. I question whether this thing even has a, is it a 20 environmental impact? I doubted it could pass, what I saw looking down in that hole. And then, I was also told, and this is second-hand information, that someone from the commission described this project as marginal at best. We're going through, committing our money to a housing project on 20 Shore Street that was described at a CPC meeting as expensive affordable housing, a term I was never familiar with. And it seems like this is right on the margins of being another expensive affordable housing project, and I question whether we can even afford it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Yes, come right up.
Good evening. I'm Edward Jallowick, 54 Alma Road. Happened to be a 300-foot butt of the project. First of all, I want to say, great planning by the Board of Selectmen in the planning board in getting the Cape Cod Commission involved in evaluating this project. Well done. I compliment you on that. Too often, I think, the town takes on a project that really stretches their expertise, the staff, and the people who serve voluntarily on these boards. So it shows great wisdom to utilize the commission and its resources that we all pay for as part of, you know, property tax transfers, when properties are sold, to the tune of over $400,000, my understanding, it comes out of Falmouth each year to support the commission. So utilize the resource. And I think it's a real compliment to the wisdom of the boards to utilize it for this. I wish it would be used for more projects. Planning board folks that made comments this evening, wonderful, showed a lot of study of what was proposed, and some great insight into issues for the property. Final point I would bring out, for historical recollection for people who might have forgotten, when this project, with this property, rather, was proposed for a large 350-unit development by a commercial developer, 40B, probably 10 years ago, a group of citizens fought the project and won, after many years, many thousands of dollars of legal fees, many thousands of dollars of consultant fees. And the key issue that finally brought us to Barnstable Superior Court was fill. A lot of folks have mentioned, well, we'll just bring in some fill. Be very careful of that, because fill has legal issues associated with this site historically. It has environmental issues. If you bring in fill, if you alter the topography of this site, you alter the groundwater levels, you also alter the stormwater runoff. Stormwater runoff, right off the bat, impacts the wetlands. All those wonderful critters and swamps and things that are there are very delicate. Any change of the water pattern can and probably will destroy those wetlands. A rare Atlantic white cedar swamp, vernal pool. So bringing in fill has that impact. Stormwater alteration. The narrow legal issue that brought us to Barnstable Superior Court several years back was a decision by Judge Muse that there was legal grounds to consider that the fill brought into the site would alter the groundwater and grievously affect adjoining properties, mine in particular, as plaintiff in the legal suit. Altering the groundwater flow would probably destroy my septic system, which is 15 feet underground. So be very careful when you say, well, we'll just bring in some fill. Not a good idea. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any last comments? Maybe we can jointly map out a game plan as we move forward. Number one is, I'd like to give a little time to both boards, to be able to funnel comments of the Board of Selectmen, either through the Assistant Town Manager, the Town Manager, your board, through Brian Curry, so that we can get feedback to the Cape Cod Commission. I would think that we would want to see what happens at the election with the ballot question, in regard to the planning of the wastewater issue in that area. I think, at the very least, that that will at least give both boards a little bit more information as we move forward. And then, hopefully, we can continue to get comments back to the Cape Cod Commission, and maybe have a joint meeting sometime in June or thereabouts, to be able to sit down and roll up our sleeves and do some kind of workshop. Does that sound reasonable for both boards? Okay. Okay, so I don't think we need to take a vote this evening. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We appreciate the Cape Cod Commission for working with us. This is a first for many that I hope to see in the future. And the board will take a three, did you want to say something?
Mr. Chairman, I just, Patty Daly, I'm Deputy Director at the Commission. I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure to work with your very professional staff. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. The board will take a three-minute recess. They need to change the tape, and we'll allow the planning board to exit the room, and we'll resume our meeting.